All the air condition that's not on the third floor is coming here.
Well, he's been having some times, huh?
Yeah, but he did really, oh, this is on.
All right. Good evening. It's my pleasure to welcome everybody to the July 13th meeting of Mount Pleasant Town Council. In the past, we've always had a casual dress thing for our July and August meetings, and some of us are and some of them aren't. But they told me it's not because they're casual, but everybody needs a coat because it's freezing cold in here. So, and the irony is there's no air condition on the third floor, but it's great down here. Councilman Howard Chapman is joining us electronically, as is allowed by our new ordinance recovering from a medical procedure that he did quite well with. So Councilman Chapman, we're glad to have you onboard electronically. Item number one, prayer tonight by Chaplain Bostic, and then we will say the pledge led by Mayor Pro Tem Tom O'Rourke. Please rise.
Is this on? It is. Let us all take a moment now to focus and to bow our heads and to pray. Wonderful counselor. We come to you tonight in Thanksgiving. We thank you for all of the folks who were able to get here safely. We thank you for the opportunity to do the work of this town of Mount Pleasant. We thank you for all that you are in our lives. I ask you today, will you please, Lord, let everyone here listen attentively, decide affirmatively, negatively, using their own consciences based on your counsel? Thank you for the people in the community. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you for all the different various units that make this town work, and particularly for each woman and each man that sits on this council. In the name that's all that's holy, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number four is public hearings, awards, and presentations. Item A is a public hearing to receive input on stormwater fee changes to become effective tax year 2021, and this also coincides with an action item on council, new business item A4. Mr. Marsen, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is a public hearing pursuant to section 6-1-330 of South Carolina Code. This is in relation to our stormwater utility management program and fee increases that become effective in this year 2021.
All right. Is there anyone here to address this? This is a public hearing? No one signed up?
No, sir.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to be a walk-on? Any walk-on candidates out there? All right. I am required by ordinance to end this public hearing with a gavel. This public hearing is closed. Item B is a presentation by Dr. Kendra Stewart of the Riley Center at the College of Charleston. It's about our One Region Roadmap, which will give us a new economic development strategic plan for the region in which Mount Pleasant will play a vital role. Kendra, it's been great working with you over the past year as we've worked together on the One Region Ready Committee, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Haney, and thank you for all the work you've done with the One Region Commission and to all the members of Mount Pleasant for all the work you've done over the Mount Pleasant Council, for all the work you've done over the past year as we've gone through this, these interesting times. I appreciate you allowing me here tonight, and I just wanted to take a moment to update you all on what's going on with the current planning of the roadmap and make a plea to encourage folks to participate in the process. The One Region Roadmap: Opportunities for All is a regional partnership formed to strengthen our economy and produce opportunities for all residents by delivering strategies and actions that make a difference in people's lives. This partnership is built on the shared desire of the public and private sectors to make our region stronger and more resilient when facing major disruptions such as the global pandemic and addressing longstanding challenges related to inequality. As our community recovers from COVID-19, we need a robust, proactive, and actionable roadmap to economic security and stability. This effort is made possible through a U.S. Economic Development Administration grant that was secured by the Berkeley-Churston-Dorchester Cog with additional support from partner agencies. We understand the pandemic has impacted all facets of our community, stalling the tourism economy, increasing housing insecurity, changing where we work, how we commute, and how we shop. This recovery and resiliency plan will include strategies to address some of the most critical challenges that have emerged over the course of this past year. The plan utilizes eight areas of focus based on the previous planning work of our regional partners. These eight areas are the regional dynamics, and they organize the plan and focus groups. The central themes of the plan are equity and economic momentum. These two dynamics will drive all of the strategies. The strategies will be organized around six action areas: affordability, global fluency, infrastructure, innovation and entrepreneurship, talent, and quality of place. These action areas are the framework for organizing the issues facing our region and the strategies needed to address them. We are engaged right now in a one-year planning process to develop the plan and are currently in the public engagement phase. To date, we have examined long-term trends and the impact of COVID-19 on the region and discussed these issues in a first round of focus groups. The focus groups also gathered input from participants about what they understand to be the strengths, weaknesses, threats, and opportunities in the region. Currently, we are engaging more broadly with the public through our business and resident surveys, which I encourage you all to participate in. The feedback we collect through the focus groups and the surveys will shape the issues addressed in the plan and will be brought before the public for additional feedback in a virtual public meeting later this year. So please sign up to take the survey. All residents of the tri-county region, as well as business owners, are encouraged to do so, and you can either scan this QR code on your smartphone or visit the website at So thank you very much for your attention this evening, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kendra. I appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Item C is acceptance of a donation. I believe that would be Mr. Santos.
Good evening, everybody. I'd just like to take an opportunity to recognize Chris Marino. Chris, if you'd like to come up. You know, we have an old saying about the nut doesn't fall far from the tree. Chris's dad was really a very special person out of Carolina Park. He donated a lot to Carolina Park, our ball fields out there. A lot of people don't know that. The library, the fire station, even the school. He was always involved, always wanting to help the community, and Chris is taking up that as well. We had a meeting over another issue, and I happened to tell him that I was trying to get a first responders monument done and that I was working on trying to get a large flagpole out there. And without even asking me a question, he offered to give the town $10,000 toward that flagpole. And so tonight, he's going to be presenting the check for the $10,000. And like I said, just like his dad, he's continuing that tradition of giving back to the community, and we're so happy to have Chris as part of our community, and we look forward to a lot of good things in the future.
Thank you very much. Item D is some longevity awards.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sarah Mittermeyer, the Deputy Director for the Public Services Department, and it is my honor to be here tonight to present the longevity award to Isaiah Young for 25 years of service.
Isaiah, will you please come up?
And before we begin, I would like to also recognize his wife, who is here in the audience, because I'm sure that she's supported him throughout the years, just as she's supporting him tonight.
Would you mind standing?
Mr. Young joined our department in 1996 as a laborer in our Waste Management Division. After obtaining his commercial driver's license in 1999, he was promoted to a vehicle operator. In 2001, he became a heavy equipment operator and was subsequently promoted to his current position of Heavy Equipment Operator Crew Leader in 2016. Mr. Young has been one of our department's most loyal and dedicated employees. He's known for his positive attitude and initiative, and he always takes time to develop and train his coworkers. His division chief describes him as a leader and the ultimate team player. He truly takes pride in supporting the elderly residents on his roots. He has received countless accolades from his residents and has played an integral role in our disaster recovery operations. Isaiah, thank you for your service, and we are so fortunate to have you as part of our department.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Sarah on a great job. This is her first time, you know, addressing council, and she did a fantastic job.
Way to go, Sarah. Item five is approval of the minutes of the June 8th Town Council meeting and the May financial statement. Do we have a motion, please?
So move.
Motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please indicate my saying. Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. The minutes are approved. Item six is public comment. If you have a public comment, please come forward. Mr. Demora will call your name. Come to the lectern, give your name and address, and you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Marie Louise Moreto. Please come forward.
I want to thank Mr. Marino for his, oh, he's gone, for his wonderful donation. And while I'm here tonight, I want to address the issue of donations to the town of Mount Pleasant, specifically a GoFundMe page that was established by the town to solicit funding for a public-private enterprise to build a cultural arts center. Whereas I represent the Mount Pleasant Community Arts Center, and we welcome public and private support for this important goal. To date, however, there has only been one substantial donation that has been made through the GoFundMe page. We urge the council to refocus the efforts in a way that are more likely to advance this goal. Specifically, we urge the council to develop a commission to give the project legs. Currently, it exists in shadows without a clear vision for what the cultural arts mission would be, without any public transparency to plan, to educate the public about the proposed cultural arts center, without any input or invitation for comment from the local art organizations, without any reference to the recent research which studied Mount Pleasant's art scene and documented the need for a functional performance and rehearsal space, and without an estimate of the likely cost of the building and the operating cost for a facility that would meet the town's needs. The Mount Pleasant Community Arts Center has been working for five years to make a community arts center a reality. We have hosted informational community events for artists and arts organizations. We have presented arts programs in the county community, and we have spoken with the local landowner about the process and prospects for securing a site. We have held fundraising events and secured grants to promote the arts in Mount Pleasant. Our work is focused and ongoing. With its GoFundMe page, council showed interest in creating a cultural arts center. We urge the council to bring together interested parties to energize this effort. We urge council to include other arts organizations. We are eager for this to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie Louise. Pat Sullivan?
Good evening. All I ask of y'all this evening is to honor the Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan in which it states that we must protect the integrity of our settlement communities by limiting further encroachment and deterioration of the original development pattern and ensuring any redevelopment is as compatible as possible with community standards. And this reflects two different items, actually it's four, I think, on the agenda tonight, at which a developer wants to annex about 19 acres of the Phillips community into the town of Mount Pleasant and then change the zoning to up Dunes West PD. Just not a right way to treat our settlement communities. So please vote no on this. Thank you.
George Freeman?
Good evening, George Freeman, 1450 Bowman Road, Director of Community Activity for CAGE. You should have gotten a sheet like this in front of you. Some years ago, when I was president of the Six Mile Neighborhood Association, I led the charge to annex the Six Mile community into the town of Mount Pleasant. When we did annex at that time, we were promised that we would be able to continue to maintain our same lifestyle of that rural chari, quiet rural character. Today, recently, we discovered that a requested, I said myself personally made when the Liberty Farms development was being created, we requested a sidewalk to finish the sidewalk in the Six Mile community from Six Mile Road to the new park in the Six Mile area. Now we're finding out that the town has plans to put a 10-foot-wide bike path instead of the sidewalk that we requested. We feel that that will ruin the character of our community because there's some other things that want to go along with that. We feel that in the plan that you have in front of you would be much better that after you have a bike path to come, that it would come along the edge of the community and at the area where you have the park, a little area where you can park in there right now, if you're going to have a little gathering area with a plaque that identifies the Six Mile community and tells the history of the Six Mile community, we feel that would be a better location for it than to put it dead in the center of the community and create all that traffic into the community. We feel that our community should be treated the same as any others, and where I've seen where in the map, the streets in those community are considered quiet streets where I assume they won't have the heavy bicycle traffic like the 10-foot bike path. And that's how we feel the Six Mile community should be treated also. Where we have the Six Mile community streets to be treated as quiet streets and not part of that 10-foot wide bike path. Thank you.
Jeanette Lee?
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Lee. I live at 2623 Lennon Lane, which is in the county, not in the town of Mount Pleasant. And I was surprised when I came out of my driveway and see all of these stuff down Hamlin Road, and I tried to inquire to find out what is going on. I tried the county, the county took two days to find out, and they finally said someone from the town of Mount Pleasant would be getting in touch with me, but that did not happen. And I just wanted to know, why would they put sidewalks on Hamlin Road from Lennon Lane up to Lang Middle School without consulting someone in the community because we are aware that they will be cutting the water off? We did not get any information on that to let us know that our water would be turned off within a day or two for them to move the water lines. We just ask them to please respect our community when things like this is coming down. We do have an organization, Seven Mile CAGE. Please funnel your information through that because that way we could benefit by giving information to everyone else in the area to let them know what's going on. Because most of the people in my area now, the settlement community, they look more like me. Most of them here look like mine, too. They cannot drive at night to come to these meetings. So all I ask that y'all, please respect us. Let us know what's going on in our community. We are in the county. Lennon Place is in the town of Mount Pleasant, which is an extension of my family name. They're in the town. We are not in, Lennon Lane is not in the town. We are in the county. So please let us know what's going on. Thank you.
Walter Brown III?
My name is Walter Brown III. I reside at 437 Benning Street, and I just want to thank council members for your service. I'd also like to thank those members who approached the Waterworks Commission concerning the tower on Simmons Street. This evening, I am asking the town to take custody of the tower, accept the $50,000 that was offered at the meeting from the Waterworks to create a park. I am asking you to name that park for former Commissioner Charlie Heineman and former employee Albert Wise. You can pay for the restoration of the tank with the 1% franchise fee that is received from Mount Pleasant Waterworks in lieu of other fees, and if that is not enough money, you can raise that fee to 2%. It hasn't been raised in probably 20 years. This is your moment. Some of you may not be on council going forward, but you have the opportunity to protect the landscape of the Low Country. As a former veteran of the Coast Guard, there are some malinies who do not have your latest equipment for navigation. Your shrimpers on Shem Creek use the water tower to direct them back to the creek. You cannot exit Shem Creek and go straight to Charleston in a direct line. You have to make a left, go down past Alhambur Hall, past the water tower in order to go to Charleston. It is an aid to navigation, and you have a great opportunity. Do you have the will? And with that, thank you for your service, and have a good evening.
Richard Habersham?
Good evening. My name is Richard Habersham, and I'm the President of the Phillips Community Association. I'm here to speak on item 1, 2, and 8, and 9. As you know, Charleston County has established a historical district for the settlement community. The criteria was we needed 51% to be considered for this district. We got 74% of the community. We, Charleston County already had the first reading for us, and on July 22nd, we'll have the second reading. And we only need one more reading to be officially a historical district in Charleston County. This property I'm speaking of, this is part of Phillip, not Dunes West, Park West, but this is in part of Phillip, in the middle of Phillip. This is part of our history, part of the community. We don't want to be piecemeal. We don't want to be, well, part of the community is in Park West, part in Phillip. All of this should be part of the Phillips community and of this historical district. In the meantime, when, you know, being part of the historical district of Charleston, we are applying for the, on the federal register for historical places. And one of the areas that we are applying for is how the community is set up, how the community is laid out. If you look at a map, you see all the little skinny lots of property, and that is sort of unique in this area and for the country. And that's how, why we are applying for. We're not, going in Park West, it will take away from our community. Going back to that 51%, when we did that, we, we got 74% for all the community, not part of the community. Thank you.
Claudia Muziek?
Good evening. I'm Claudia Muziek, 1285 Six Mile Road. I'm here about the widening of Highway 17 in the Seven Mile area. Our church, Goodwill Church, which has been there for 183 years, with that widening, it's in danger of, you know, being obsolete because people can't get in there from a tan lane road. Because a lot of people in that area, they walk the church, and to walk across tan lanes, that's going to destroy the church. So I'm just asking y'all to, you know, to, there is a better solution that, I'm a member of CAGE, I'm the secretary, that we came up with, you know, with a different road route, you know, that wouldn't impact us so much. And that's all I'm asking you is to please take another look at it because you'll be destroying another historical community if you don't. Thank you.
Myra Richardson?
Myra Snite Richardson, 2755 Earl Johnson Lane, Mount Pleasant. I've asked this question before when we dealt with Hungry Neck. Why does progress always mean the death of a black community? It seems as if Mount Pleasant plans all this development and allow it to go through, and infrastructure comes through the black community. It's that, that's your plan. We're gonna build up around the Donut Hole, what we were called, now we're, want to be called the settlement communities. We're gonna build up all around you. And when there's a problem with traffic, we're gonna come through you. Not once, not twice, over and over and over and over again. The Seven Mile community is facing this problem right now. Again, the death of a black community because the infrastructure is always placed on our backs. And as Ms. Lee spoke about what's going on Hamlin Road, I ran around, called around today to find out what's going on. Why wasn't any of the residents informed about a sidewalk going in? That's just so disrespectful. So disrespectful. We are not just asking, we're demanding respect. If you're gonna come in the community, at least give Cage, the members of Cage, someone to call. You have a bridge for the communication gap between the town of Mount Pleasant and the settlement communities. Cage is available. Inform them so that we can be informed of what's going on. You've created a dangerous situation because as residents are going in and out, I turned in the other day just to speak to the gentleman on the side of the road to find out what was going on. And I had trouble backing out, getting back onto Hamlin Road. So, respect us and let us know what's going on. Cage is all gap to communication. Thank you.
That's all I have, sir. That's it.
Anyone who did not sign up here for public comment? No one?
Yes, sir.
All right, come on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Fred Smalls, 2959 Elijah Smalls Road in the Phillips community. And I'd like to speak on behalf of the nine-acre tract, the Martin Tract, which is actually located in the Phillips community, that is currently up to be rezoned and annexed into the town of Mount Pleasant. We have never opposed any individual or group that wanted to purchase property in Phillip. We've never opposed any individual or group that wanted to sell or develop their property in Phillip. However, we do oppose any and everyone who wants to come into our community, change our zoning to something other than what it is. Anything that would allow that commercial zoning in our community is a death sentence to our community. All of the encroachment from all of the neighboring subdivisions, the problem with the widening of the highway, all of these different things come into our community. So our zoning is what really protects us. So we will oppose anyone, to include residents, that wants to change that zoning. And we're asking this council to please look at this because even in your description, you don't say that this property is in Phillip proper. Mr. Habersham spoke about the historical designation that we're trying to accomplish. And that was done, according to the map of 1875, this property is still in Phillip proper. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we will conclude Item 6 on our agenda, which is public comment, and move to Item 7, which is consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve final reading of Items?
Motion to approve.
7A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Keep forgetting about you there, Howard. I'm sorry. I see you though. All right, so that concludes Item 7. Those are both approved. This moves us to Item 8, planning, Item A1, new business. Ms. Reed, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So these, I'm gonna take these two together, and I'll talk about them. And then they do, it's an annexation and a zoning or a PD amendment, so they will be voted on separately. And then we'll have, the reason they're on ahead of the later request is because this came in earlier in February, was deferred at committee for a few months, and so it came in at a separate time. So I just wanted to explain that these all are gonna, eventually, the proposals for them to all be together, but they came in a separate request. So 1 and 2 is an annexation and zoning for a nine, a little over nine-acre tract of land comprised of two parcels. And let me get to a map here. So you can see it's between Julius Robertson and Joe Rouse, and it's at the terminus of Hopkins Road, which is part of Covington, so Covington Phase 1 and 2. Again, the comprehensive plan does call for settlement community land uses. You can see there that dark color, the two properties with the stars are the two we're talking about. They are currently vacant, and the proposal is to bring those in and to zone them into the Dunes West PD. So that's the annexation request, and I can go forward with the amendment.
I think we better do them separately. Do we have a motion? Remind everyone, this is first reading. This would be on the annexation.
Move to approve.
We have a move to approve the annexation. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. I want to remind everybody, this is not the zoning, this is only the annexation. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I drive right past this every day, and so not only have been called by a number of homeowners around there, but also have driven through there both during busy times as well as like on a Sunday afternoon, just to see. And one of the concerns, annexation is, in this case, perhaps the best way that we can protect the way this property is used. If we were to turn down an annexation request, I guess most people realize that means that they could automatically apply for sewer, and because they own that land, the property owners, and this is part of Phillips proper, but again, it's not mentioned here, could go forward with something that we may or may not think would be the best for the surrounding community. But here's the problem I do have, and this is not about annexation, but it is about it, because right now, these folks want to build something back there that would have to use. They're not proposing any kind of other ingress or egress. It would have to use the same ingress and egress as the current Covington entrance. And it already has substantial homes back there. How many is it total, Michelle? Do you know approximately?
About 33.
I was gonna say, somewhere over 30, right. So they're talking about, and I know there's, some of this is the next part's discussion, but I just want to make sure we know that I've asked a lot of questions about how can we help best protect this land from being used for something that could really overwhelm that neighborhood and not be in keeping with the Phillips community. And it appears that annexing it so that it comes in, because we used to have the annex in, you get automatic R1. Now, we have annexed into what's appropriate, and what's appropriate is the community conservation, which is basically what it has now. But I'm afraid that they might go in another direction if we didn't annex them.
Right, the motion is to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
It's first reading, ordinance number 21047.
All right, Item 2 is the zoning of this property.
Move to deny.
Second.
Second.
Motion to deny. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion to deny carries. This moves us to Item number 3.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Items 3, 4, 5, and 6, which are all annexations that are part of a requirement that, once they are contiguous, that they annex into the town.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the annexation of Items 3, 4, 5, and 6, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
First readings of ordinance numbers 21049, 21050, 21051, and 21052.
Item number 7 is another annexation.
Move to deny.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to deny. And a second, is there any discussion? All in favor of, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody want to give an explanation of why we're denying this one just specifically? Is there anything that you can share about it?
Mr. Ambon?
Yes. So there are a couple of things. East Cooper Habitat for Humanity owns this property, and they are working on a project with it, as well as the fact that it is in a rural area that would cost the town money to, more money than it would bring in to service. And the property owner is okay with denial. Yep.
All right, any others? All right, all in favor of the motion to deny, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
All right, by eight to one, the motion is approved to deny. All right, Item number 8, this is the annexation of this property that we have been hearing about this in the Phillips community. This is the annexation only. Do we have a motion? Hello?
I'll move for.
Move for approval on Item 8. Do we have a second? This is the annexation only.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Right next to the one that we just did. Okay, all right, yeah, that's right. Sorry.
Yes, this is only the annexation. Item number 8, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
First reading, ordinance number 21054.
Number 9 moves us to the zoning.
Motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion to deny. And a second, is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion to deny passes unanimously. That concludes the new business. Section B is planning old business. There are no old business items. Section 10 of our agenda is a committee action item that has to do with the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee funding recommendations. Would that be you, Mr. O'Rourke? No? Okay, there we go. All right.
Barrettts.
Chapman Chapman.
Howard Chapman. And what I would like to do, first of all, is to thank Lauren Sims for staffing this program. She's done a great job with it, and you're gonna see on your screens what we're planning on doing. I also want to give a lot of credit to the committee that we, council, appointed. We appoint a number of committees, and a lot of times, the individuals don't get the recognition that they deserve. I'd ask that a copy of the committee be forwarded to you this afternoon, probably hadn't gotten yet, but I just want to recognize Jennifer Maxwell, Terry Ainsley, Lisa Bradley, Rumbie McLeod, Shell Patel, and Marie Ricose. They did a great job putting this program out there for people to see and to review. They asked a lot of questions that I never would have even thought about asking, so they did a great job. And the committee met to make the recommendation for four funding requests for which the committee received applications. Current balance available is $150,000. Council has received a summary of the requests and the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for the four funding requests. They totaled $26,000. If council accepts the committee's recommendation, this will leave us $124,000 balance for the second part of this fiscal year. And as such, I move that council approves the funding recommendations totaling $26,000 for tourist marketing program in the amount of $3,000, Charleston Select Men Shootout $1,500, Charleston Select Women Shootout $1,500, and the Wayne Magwood Fisherman's Memorial $20,000. That's my report and my recommendation, and I move the committee's recommendation.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, we are in discussion. Any discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. O'Rourke.
I'll just say this, I've said it before, and I'll just sleep better tonight. I wish that it could, and I guess this is a Magwood family thing, but I feel like what Junior Magwood started in this, and I'm old enough to remember everybody's father. It would be like naming something in Carolina Park after Chris Marino, okay? And it's, without Junior Magwood, there's no Wayne Magwood, there's none of that. And I wish it was the Magwood Fisherman's Memorial, and the story could be told of the generations of Magwoods that contributed to this and this family. No disrespect to Wayne and what he did. That's not why I'm saying this. But 50 years from now, everybody's gonna want to know who Wayne Magwood was, because it's the Wayne Magwood Fisherman's Memorial. But Junior lit this spark, Junior started this thing. And I just wish, and I know that's not what we're voting on, but I just, like I said, I'm just saying this to sleep better tonight, that I wish this was a Magwood Fisherman's Memorial. That's just my comment.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, you're right, Tom. That's why when we decided to name the boardwalk, we named it Magwood Boardwalk for the whole family as well, because like you said, it started many, many years ago, and it was a family affair on Shem Creek. So that's why I wanted to name it Magwood Memorial to honor all of the Magwoods, the whole family.
All right, the motion before us is to approve the recommendations of the ATAC Committee. And we have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. This brings us to Section 10, council business, new business. These are all first reading, so please keep in mind, it cannot be amended at first reading. And these are, I will go with Mr. Paglioni first. This is ordinance that has to do with parades, demonstrations, public assemblies, and picketing. This came through our committee, Police Judicial and Legal, at the behest of our police chief, and he'll give us a little bit of background on it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to request an amendment. Upon reviewing this ordinance, I felt like Section C of Section 94, the exceptions, was very broad and opened us up to the possibility of having a very large assembly with very little notice. Today, we see public assemblies, protests, rallies, that come in for a variety of reasons, but based on this definition, spontaneous event occasioned by the news, the 24-hour news cycle, combined with social media, we have the potential to have a very large assembly in which this chapter is no longer relevant. And my concern is the safety of the public, the people assembling, the potential for protests, counter protests, and having adequate time to prepare for that and keep everyone safe. So I'm asking that this section of the exceptions, Section C, be repealed.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. I will say that the committee heard that, and we passed this unanimously. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved unanimously.
First reading, ordinance number 21056.
Item number 2 is ordinance to amend, this is the titles of the engineering and development services.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number 21057.
Item number 3 is an ordinance to amend the chapter. Item number three is an ordinance to amend the chapter that has to do with charges, payments, payment procedures, fees, amount pleasant code of ordinances. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Police Department administers the rotational towing system. It's been over 11 years since there was a significant increase in the fees. However, the cost of running a rotational towing system has increased, and we're asking that the rates come in line with other area municipalities that have rotational systems.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
First reading ordinance number 21058.
Item number four is an amendment to chapter 52 of our Code of Ordinances pertaining to the town's stormwater utility management program, about which we had a public hearing at the beginning of this meeting, and keep in mind again, this is first reading. Mr. Morrison.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, we had the public hearing, we've been working on this about nine months now. It began last fall, been a lot of discussion on the technical aspects of this with the guidance of council and several committees. So we're now to the point where we have an ordinance that introduces a tiered rate structure for the stormwater utility fee. In essence, what that does is designates that, it really correlates that the impervious area of a smaller home is going to pay less than the impervious area produced for a larger home. So that really was the intention, original intention of a tiered structure. What you have in front of you this evening is really what we call a just-in-time approach to the fee structure. So basically, every year, the fee is adjusted to just achieve the $1.5 million outlay of expenditure that we have for the stormwater program. So there is a lot of technical analysis behind it, but essentially, those are the two primary focus of the new ordinance.
All right, thank you very much, do we have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Chapman.
Mayor, members of council, I want to thank the staff for helping us put this together. Y'all may remember during the discussion of the tax, property tax last October, we were very cautious about what we thought we needed to do to make sure we did not impact the property owners any more than necessary, but still have a viable and strong stormwater program, which would allow us to start working on the drainage problems in the old village, in a particular royal area. This allows those individuals who may not have been justly considered when we did that, the opportunity to be made whole. And I want to thank the staff for all of their efforts to help us bring this along, so I very much recommend this approval.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, because what we've seen in both the chart that was presented at the beginning and this chart, in the prior chart, it is that people with smaller homes are actually going to get a break right now. They're going to stop paying 60, they're going to pay a lower number, and they don't actually get back up to 60 until, I think, the fifth year or 2025, maybe four years out. They don't actually even get back to where they've been all along. So what we're doing, and what council member Chapman said very well, is we are actually moving the numbers down for people with a smaller property, keeping them the same for people that are in the middle tier, and raising them for people who have much larger homes, and therefore potentially more impervious surface that affects stormwater. So this was something that we spent a lot of time in Flood Resilience Finance Committee, the staff put countless hours into it in order to try to make this system something that's hard to do, but as fair as it possibly could be based on the impact that people's properties have. And so I know I personally do not like to see us raise any kind of fees or taxes, but this is one where we actually do lower it in one place, raise it in another in a way that makes it more equitable. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, first reading.
First reading ordinance number 21059.
Is approved. All right, item number five is a resolution about renewing the lease of the Wildon Street Library to Charleston County, I believe it's $1 a year, and.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 21071.
Item number six, a resolution to renew the memorandum of understanding for a financial understanding between the town of Mount Pleasant and Mount Pleasant Water Works. This is.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. This is to give us one year to get more specific with the details, and talk about the money and how it will be used, and what the obligations of both parties are. We have a motion to approve and a second, yes, sir, Mr. Santos.
Mr. Mayor, I know we had a gentleman speak earlier about this, we've had some discussions about this. I think that 1% equals about a little over $500,000, right?
Yes, sir.
You know, the tower they're claiming is going to cost about a million dollars, and I think before we just settled on this, that we really ought to look at it and see, maybe if we add 2% in there for a total of 3% for this one year, we can raise that money to fix the tower and keep the tower, which is a historic part of Mount Pleasant. And, you know, as the speaker said earlier, you know, the shrimp boats use that to be able to guide themselves in, and it's got some historical value to it. And I think we ought to look at that really close to make sure that before we do this, that we can look at all the options here to see if we can do this. That tower has been left alone for so many years, and it's like a car. If you don't take care of it and keep it up, it's going to break down and die on you. And I think that's what's happened with this tower. It's just been sitting there for all these years, and there's not been any work done to it, and now all of a sudden they want to take it down. And I just think we ought to do all we can do to keep that tower up. It's part of the history of Mount Pleasant, it's part of our culture, and I think we ought to look at trying to add, you know, 2% to this in order to get that money to be able to fix the tower. I don't know that it even costs all that much, I don't know, we haven't done the research yet. I know they have, and they're telling us it'll cost about a million dollars, but I'm not quite sure, I think until we do the research, I feel more comfortable.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. So the current MOU between Water Works and the town actually expires the 23rd of this month. And so what the MPW commissioners voted on was to extend it through the end of this fiscal year, through June 30th, because they've budgeted their money in the budget appropriately based on the current MOU, so has the town. And so all this is doing is extending the current agreement for a little bit less than a year to give us time to negotiate whatever the new agreement would be. Otherwise, it's going to, if we don't vote for this, it's going to expire in two weeks. And I don't know what that will mean for the rates that, the municipal water rate that the town pays, or other things. So that's just kind of the basis of, the extension is actually to give us time to negotiate.
I can clarify on that, too, I asked a question. The town gets about a $600,000 a year discount on the water for all of our ball fields, every place that we water. If this is allowed to expire and we don't extend this, and in the future, if we don't come to an agreement about, you know, the percentage and the terms and everything, it will cost the town $600,000. So I strongly urge the passage of this extension of one year, which has nothing to do with the tower, because the contract on the water tower begins the takedown of that in the next few days.
Exactly.
It's not one or the other.
Exactly, that's why I want to bring it up now, and see if we can't put that off a little bit until we can have those discussions. If not, they're going to take it down, and even, say we decide to do it, it's too late. It's already been taken down, so now's the time to say, please hold off on taking it down till we can review this and come to an agreement. I mean, I think that's what the community is asking us to do, am I right? And I think we owe it to the community to do that, instead of just letting them just take this down without us being able to research it and see if we can do it.
Well, Mr. Santos, we have the minutes from the April 3, 2017 Water Supply Committee, the approved minutes, where this was brought, and you were on that committee, and you're in the minutes saying that the tank should come down, but there should not be a tower, a cellphone tower put in its place. So I think the Water Works Commission would take objection to the fact of someone saying suddenly, or this has not been looked at, or there's been no research done. That's not what the record proves, and to give the impression that to delay this will cause the tank not to come down is not accurate.
Well, there's been a lot more information since that time that's come out, and I think we owe it to the citizens, especially of that community, to be able to research this thoroughly before we take it down. That's just my opinion.
Well, I would just add, we are not taking it down, and it's not our tank, it's Mount Pleasant Water Works, which is also an elected body. All right, are we prepared to vote? This is on the extension of this agreement, this is item six.
All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
No.
By eight to one, the motion to extend is approved.
Resolution 21072.
Item B is old business, there is no council, old business. Item C is executive session, which would be discussion and possible action regarding a purchase of property for economic development.
Move to go to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to go into executive session for the reason of discussing a possible action regarding a purchase of property for economic development, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, council may take action on any item, including any subsection of any section listed on an executive session agenda or discussed in an executive session during a properly noticed meeting. We are now in executive session.
[inaudible]